Open early work session on Tuesday, November the 12th, 6:00 PM. It started with the best awarding grant funds to community nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2024 and 2025.
Yeah, so every year nonprofit organizations wishing to receive grant funds from the city, submit applications and those are all reviewed and there's specific criteria they have to meet per resolution 2018, 2017, 2019. Once we review those, those are all submitted to council and we do, this year we had 20, we had two new ones that applied this year, Love Pacts and Love Thy Neighbor. So 20 nonprofit organizations submitted applications this year. Like I said, I copied all of those, we've all been devoted to council and you receive presentations from all of those organizations at your regular meeting on October 22nd. So this is an opportunity for council to discuss funding allocations. A total of the requests amount to $86,012. We do not have that much money budgeted this year, so like I said, this is an opportunity for council to discuss. And then if you choose to do allocations, there is an action item on tonight's regular meeting agenda as well.
All right, council, do you mind?
We have a chart that we pulled up that Ken kind of plugs in the numbers as you go through and it does a running total for everybody. It's the history of what we've given them the past few years and then it's got the request this year along with.
Do you have a percentage of whatever that you use for this budget?
Yes, so it is, and I may have to have Ken's help on this, but in previous years, historically, there's been 0.25% of the city's maintenance and operations budget, excluding capital projects or funding or purchasing funds, which has been allocated for the nonprofit organizations.
0.25 of maintenance.
0.25 is the maintenance and operations budget. So together that comes to $59,500 this year.
Hey, Ms. Rhonda.
So all these, these groups are great and we've got citizens that like some, don't like some, want to help more than other. So I took the 20 people, 20 things, divided it by 20 to see what, you know, everybody would get the same. But when groups ask for a certain amount, being on certain nonprofit boards, you don't want to give them more than they ask for because it can set them up for failure next year because they think that money's coming. So I put together a spreadsheet that really just took the 20, the average, took out the ones, subtracted the ones that wanted less than the average, re-did the average, there's a couple more that fell below that and then came up with a, an average to where everybody's treated the same. If you'd like to see that.
You want to go down, you didn't go down the, and go down. So what was the average?
So at first, at the 20, if you have all the 20, the average was 2,975. However, there was six groups that wanted, that needed, requested less than that. So if you recalculate that, you take out that amount that, which was 8,862, that leaves you 14 groups with an average of 3,617. But there was three groups that wanted less than 3,617. So you pull that out, which was $9,500. So then that leaves you with $47,138 and all the other groups would be, to be the same, would be $3,739.82.
Wow, okay.
Well, it treats everyone the same, so we're not showing.
Same math we used last year.
Same math we used last year, so everybody's treated the same. Is that what you did last year?
Yeah. Okay.
But yeah, here's, if somebody wants.
Yeah, let me, I want to see it.
Discussion because we're just going to reuse the map.
There you go.
Well, I mean, it's, everybody should be.
So if everybody, I wasn't here last year, remember, so I didn't know that sound.
You weren't there, were you?
I was not.
That's why I did the spreadsheet, so you could see, but it just, we represent everybody equally the same.
Right.
You can't get it up there if you want to look at it like.
If we can call those numbers out that way, everybody can see the.
I did not, I did not do this, but the question I have is of the 20 that have made application, has anyone or anyone in staff looked at the workings of them and determined how much of the donated funds actually goes to serving the citizens? Whether they're Louisville or Farmant, but how much money is administrative and how much money is actually gone to assist people? Has anybody calculated that? I thought about it, but I didn't take the time to do it yet this year.
A couple of years ago, we, I don't say we did it officially. I didn't do it officially, but I started looking through if most of them, if you look at what they're asking for as a percentage of their budget.
Yes, man, it's good.
Right. I mean, some of them, they're, they've got budgets multi-million dollars. They get a lot of federal money, so what we're giving them is around a year. So that's why I quit digging.
And the applications they submit does ask how many people who identify themselves as residents of Highland Village receive services or benefits from your organization in the last 12 months, so.
Right, I saw that, but I'm looking at funds that actually flow through the organization, right? And actually affect the people on the ground in any community.
I didn't, I didn't.
I haven't really done any analysis of it. What I, what I don't want to do is provide funds to an organization that is heavy administratively.
Right.
I think that's a waste of our resources and it doesn't benefit anyone.
There was nothing to jump out.
Yeah, but like PD Place makes, they have millions of dollars, but they specifically ask for money to help the foster kids in Highland Village.
Right.
So they earmarked, like in the Meals for Wheels, he's asking for the meals here. But I, yeah, I didn't do that. I just did the, everybody treated the same, so we don't take preference for one over the other because.
Well, and I appreciate the, the effort and I think that's the appropriate way to look at it as well. So I like that. The other question I had was, or concern I had was, one of them, trying to remember the name now. One of them is actually a government entity, I believe, or.
That's MM, that's the mental health side.
Yeah, MMR.
But the suicide, I don't think was, the suicide prevention's not funded, I don't think, by them. I think it's an unfunded part of it, I think, but I could be wrong. But it's MM, MM, what is it?
MMR.
Dim County.
Chisholm Trail, retired, Chisholm Trail retired senior volunteer.
They do get federal.
That's part of the, yes, that's it, that's part of the work.
Chisholm Trail, yes.
But they're, they requested 2,500, so that falls below the average.
Say that again, please.
They requested 2,500, so that would fall below the average on the calculation that Rhonda did.
They bring in, they bring in seniors to help.
Understand.
Yeah, but I get it, it is a government entity.
It's a government entity, we're funding a government entity essentially.
I get that.
Which, which is really kind of.
Oxymoron.
Give me pause.
I could, I could agree with that.
And I like what they do. I think it's a necessity. I think it's appropriate. Just have a problem with it also being a federal organization. Providing funds for.
Yeah, we pay twice, but mostly these organizations we fund twice.
Also, I didn't hear the last part.
We fund, like there, a lot of them get a lot of taxpayer money, keep them moving.
True.
The only other one that is Louisville, the, oh yeah, because they take that money and specifically apply it to Louisville's Highland Village School. Like our money goes directly to Highland Village request. But I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with this if, if everybody else is good with it. I think it's.
Good with it. I am. Those are just my concerns.
Those are good concerns. No, those are very good concerns.
But I appreciate the, the effort and the calculation. I think that is, with the limited amount of funds that we have available to it.
Everybody needs a handy dandy math nerd.
What'd you, what'd you say?
Everybody needs a handy dandy math nerd.
All right, go math nerd. When you turn your light on, I'm going to say math nerd.
Say that real fast.
I wear it proudly.
There you go.
We need a new name to it.
Okay, so I guess, you want me to just give you this paper? Yeah, and let you, because if everybody.
Plug it in, look at it and then.
Yeah, plug it in and, I mean, because the only ones that, so then the average number is $3,739.82. Love Pax requested 1680, so that's below that. Love Thy Neighbor requested 3,000, that's below that. Span did 1932. And then Chisholm Trail Retired Seniors with 2,500. Our Mountain Library, 500. And then the Louisville Playhouse. No, they didn't come. They did not come.
I don't know, was it a scheduling conflict or?
They did not. They were supposed to come. They were scheduled to, so we. So is everybody, they didn't come that night and did a presentation?
Do we know why they didn't come? I mean, it's, I don't want.
I apologize, I should have followed up on that.
Cross them off the list just.
Typically, if it's an emergency, like in years past, if something has happened, they are very prompt at reaching out to us the next day to say, this happened, something came up, whatever. You haven't heard from them at all. And I apologize, I should have reached out to them to follow up on that since that last presentation.
I mean, they're only asking for $1,200, so.
I'm okay with, they're, they're one of the newbies.
Yes.
They were a newbie?
Yes, this was the first year they requested funds.
And then the only other one was MLK of North Texas and they asked for a thousand, so the rest of them worked out. We do the Louisville Playhouse. 50, then the rest of them would be 37, 39, 82.
Was winning the fight the one that got the grant last year?
Yes.
Yeah, opioid settlement funds.
That's the, yeah, and I read that there's more coming, more funds are coming.
We've gotten, what about $3,500 more in the opioid settlement funds since that first big one? And it will, it was just coming.
Yeah, after watching that film, the body cam, were you here? We got to see a real life body cam, Narcan and all. It was amazing and knowing that that fund's heading this way, but it was, it was amazing.
It was one of our guys.
It was our, remember, our two guys came in and, and they saved his life. It was amazing.
They, I talked to Kathy, she gets it up and we talked about her coming in and doing Narcan training for the council. Maybe sometime after the first year, so.
Which we didn't need it.
I know. Now they say they're going to have like vending machines, they're going to have it all over the place and it's just.
Okay, so is everybody, everybody's good with that? We're going to let Ken plug all that in and that's what, okay, we're going to move on. Thank you, math nerd.
One thing, there, you may have some extra money here. And because you're going to have a couple that you've cut funding from last year.
That's because we had more people applying.
Round up and donate to city attorneys.
It came up right at, I mean, at the, that exact amount on that page. Let's see.
$10 is high.
Oh, we're $200, I mean, 2,000.
Pass the plate.
Where's the $200?
Which department wants to go back and redo their.
That's two meals. Scott, can you cut your budget by $2?
Well, sure.
Cut that span budget back.
Yeah, span takes the $2 away.
Oh yeah, because it's 1932, just do 1930 and then.
It's a couple of meals.
Yeah, but they asked for specifically the number of meals.
Hey, does somebody go on and do a meal for that? I think we're good for it.
I think, all right. Do you need to take a lot of credit?
I hope we're good for it.
That's what happens, you know.
Thank you for indulging me. Thank you for indulging me with my math, my academics.
I have not experienced your math, so.
My mommy's taking me to the grocery store to calculate coupon prices.
Okay, we're going to move on then to do a presentation and discuss short-term rentals and single-family rental program in Highland Village.
Okay. Do you want to use a remote or do you want to?
Yeah.
Should be one of the swans.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mayor and Council, we have had previous presentations about short-term rentals as well as the single-family rental program. And at the end of this, we would like to get some kind of consensus or direction from council as far as where we go from here. So a lot of this is, again, it's going to be a repeat of the past, but I'll cover that quickly. And again, for a short-term rental, it's a residential property that is rented wholly or partly for a fee for a period not longer than 30 consecutive days. And Airbnb and Verbo are the most common platforms for rental. These are just some of the rulings that state that cities cannot prohibit or ban short-term rentals. That person was the City of Austin, but we can adopt reasonable regulations that are backed by evidence showing the regulations serve to protect the health, safety and welfare of renters and other citizens. HOAs, at least at this point, unless the legislature changes it, they have a little more authority in eliminating short-term rentals. Highland Shores has adopted rules, so they're not allowed in Highland Shores. I'm not sure about any of the others, if they've changed theirs at this point or not. And this is a.
What's the definition of a short-term rental?
Less than 30 days.
Less than 30 days. Yeah. And this is the map of the HOAs and the no HOAs in the city, and so we're just roughly over 50% HOAs in the city.
Wait, Mon, can you make, Mon didn't have an HOA.
Yeah, we need to double check that one. We'd add it to Questo because they have one. And that might have been an old one that they had at one point.
We don't have an HOA.
Is it a volunteer one, maybe? Briar Hills got a volunteer.
There was, they had one at one time and it might have been a voluntary, it was a big, yeah, but I don't think it's, I mean, you live there, but I don't.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any enforcement.
You're not paying your dues.
Yeah.
Nor are anybody else over there, I assure you.
Before a close, you're probably getting, so we'll, we'll make sure we correct that.
Yeah.
So in the past, I've mentioned, there's a company called Rentalscape and I've got some updated information from them. And they state that there are 21 short-term rental properties in Highland Village. Right now, there's only about half of those that are active. I did a search, entered different dates and tried to find it and I kept coming up with 10 or 11, at least for now. We've had seven code enforcement cases over the past year. Five of those were at one location, which were tall grass, weeds. Yeah, yeah. We've had nine calls for service at four over the past year. Several of those were false alarms, parking, suspicious persons, things like that. And we do flag all of the short-term rentals in our dispatch system, so we can keep records and, and follow up on that information.
And you flag those after complaints or you just?
We, we did the, well, we had some complaints, we knew those were, and then we did a further search and put everything on there, so. We've added a couple since that time. So if you do a short-term regulation policy, these are just kind of some of the basics of it. There is an annual registration fee. The property owner must designate a 24-hour local emergency contact. Property must be maintained in a safe and habitable condition. Generally, they're required to post safety rules and posting of neighborhood rules. So that would be all of our noise ordinances, trash ordinances and things like that that would cover it. And some cities do have a revocation clause in an appeals process, so if there's a continual issue with one of the STRs, they can go through a process and they can lose a ride to, to do that.
Louisville's a year. They lose it for a year.
A year, okay.
Yep, three strikes, they lose it for a year.
Yeah, most of them are pretty much after three, they are. So the safety information would be included with the owner agent name and contact, 24-hour emergency contact, police and fire, floor plan of evacuation routes and exits, location of fire extinguishers and alarms, occupant and guest limits, and then if this was done, you could not do commercial events, meetings or parties. And the neighborhood rules are the noise requirements, trash requirements, parking requirements. And those are essentially anything that anybody in the city would have to do.
I'm sorry, can you go back a little bit quick? Sorry, one slide. Commercial events, I understand, meetings or parties. How are we defining meetings or parties? More than two people?
We haven't, yeah.
We haven't, yeah, yeah, we haven't worked through that.
Does it mean commercial parties?
In B, well.
Yeah, pay-for-party or just you can't have a party if you're an individual?
When I've stated them, it's registered guests. Typically, you have to register your guests and it's registered guests.
And then some will say you can have your registered guest plus so many visitors or something like that.
Based on the number of registered guests.
Yeah. The outside posted contact requirement, a lot of cities do this, that is required to be put on the front door, near the front door of the STR, so if a neighbor's having an issue, they can go over there and get that contact information and contact the owner themselves.
Some cities have a website that has it all on there.
Yeah, yeah. Now, Rentalscape, they do a lot of different things. They can do compliance verification, address identification, registration and tax collection, if you were doing the hotel motel tax. They can even have host communications where the, they make direct connections with those that have the properties. They can do a map where you can have it on your website that would show where those are. And they have all sorts of different reports that you can, you can produce and then a complaint management system. So just to give you an idea, if we were to start something like this and cities charge anywhere from about $300 to, to $400, your initial, your initial permit fee. So if we took those 21, that'd be $8,400. And if we did decide to do the hotel motel tax based on the information from Rentalscape, that'd be about $15,840. So that total revenue year one would be 20, just over 24,000. If we were to use some of those services from Rentalscape, one, the identification, monitoring, reporting module, that's 3,500. Tax collection, 5,000, inspection services. And I put that inspection services there if we did not want to use our own team to do that and we wanted to hire a third party. Looking at some other cities, that would pretty much covers there. So that total would be $13,500, which would leave you roughly $10,000 that could be used for tourism promotion.
So do we currently get the hotel taxes if they're not?
We do not, no. We would have to adopt an ordinance to claim.
You're going through like Airbnb or BRBO?
Correct. Cities have to adopt the collection of that tax or they don't pay.
And money has to be used for tourism.
It does, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's not, you can't use your general.
Parks, we've been talking about these pickleball tournaments and softball tournaments and regional type things, so that lasts a whole weekend because it has to last more than a day, I think.
The kicker on this is with, when you're using your hot tax, so it's going to be putting heads in beds and if you don't have any beds to put them in, you've got to make sure you put something else, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's a difficult.
So the 21 that we currently have, is it like a flat 21? Do we see any growth in that number?
It has been that way for a while and I check periodically and I'm generally counting 10 or 11 on the website. It, it's a little difficult because the locations aren't entirely specific, like it doesn't show it if it was on Highland Village Boulevard. It's not going to show you that. But by looking at the pictures, we've, we've identified most of them, but it has stayed that way. So going into the second year and staying static with those 21, generally that first, that first time payment for that first inspection is more than you pay roughly a hundred dollars or some kind of fee every year after that. So that would be $2,100 in revenue a year or two, estimating the same revenue for hot tax. And then again, the same services with Rentalscape, that'd give you $4,400 in tourism. So if everything kind of stays static, you have the initial big registration, then after that it would kind of trickle down. The $4,400 is not your word static. Inspection services, your collection fees if necessary, monitoring, reporting, those will always sustain. Actually, the inspection services would go down and that would depend if we do an annual inspection or we decide not to do an annual inspection.
But just inflationary causes would cause an increase in that, so we'd have to have the same thing and we'd have to have increases in the, in the annual fees as well to offset it.
Why would we change the annual fee? I mean, everybody runs, we have businesses and all businesses have to register and do things in our city and this is a business, so why would we change it?
And most of the ones, the way they do that, year one, you have to get the inspection, so it's higher to pay for the inspection. Year two, most cities are not doing an inspection on STRs every year. So that's why it's just a renewal fee, administrative.
That defeats the health, safety and welfare then if we're not inspecting. I mean, that's, that's like not. And again, like we talked about before, I think all our rentals, residential, single-family or short-term should have annual inspections. Because I, I could, there's a, there's a house in our neighborhood that's pretty sure is a boarding house. Swimming pool's been boarded in and the second, and you, some of us have been in this home when it was for sale once. I think we should protect our residents who are renters as well. So anything should, it shouldn't be a nothing murder in my opinion.
It can certainly be written that way. We could do, we could do inspections.
That brings up whether you have rental regulations, not the short-term rental regulations. It would come as well, you've got to have an inspection before new tenant moves in.
Yeah, and annual, I don't think that's too much to ask for an annual inspection though.
The only problem is offsetting it with another employee. If we're going to do it in-house, then you're going to be.
Make it revenue neutral. We have to.
Yeah, you could.
Places like Bioveritas and all where they pay them directly, we're completely out of it.
Yeah, have, hire somebody outside.
You could do that or Scott estimated that the, a good guy that we looked at as far as what a, what an inspector would look at on a short-term rental, would take about three hours' time for an inspection.
Really?
Yeah, you've got to check a lot of it.
Normal inspection.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like doing a Highland inspection.
But again, I would, any cost for them to run a business like any other business, they should pay for it. It's not our responsibility.
I want to go back and see, how many, how many problems have we encountered? I mean, it has some code, so that was grass, seven out of nine. How many other code violations are not code but just nuisance?
It would have been the ones that were on the police department calls for service, yeah.
And four of those were.
What location?
There's one location that violates, I believe, but since nothing's been done, they stopped reporting. From smoking marijuana on down the line.
Anybody can do that.
I know that, but.
Your next-door neighbor right now.
Oh, I know.
The biggest problem I have with all of this is we're talking about limiting property owner rights, which I think is, should be off the table. It is not our responsibility to tell somebody else what they can or cannot do with their properties. I have a real problem with doing this, especially on a short term. HOAs are doing it, I suspect, and Kevin can weigh in on this, but some of these cities that have put in regulations and the court systems have turned these over, have they not?
Well, it depends on the, it depends on the extent to which regulations are, you know, because you've got everything from just merely a registration without doing much else and making sure they're collecting the hot tax to the, the general, I mean, there's a total ban. Well, the total bans, yes, those have been losing in court.
So do you suspect then that the HOA, Highland Shores HOA will get overturned as well once?
Well, here, here's the deal, there was that, there was a case, it came out, Texas Supreme Court decided it. And what it was, was it was an actual challenge under restrictive covenants that was brought by the HOA and property association in that case. And the problem in that with, was with the definition of what constituted residential use, because it was an older set, it was an older set, pre-STR type of covenants where, you know, the properties were, you know, subject to restricted covenants and said they're for residential use. Well, in that case, court held, well, short-term rentals are a residential use. Well, in that case, court held, well, short-term rentals are a residential use. What developers and now HOAs have gone back and done is they've gotten more specific. Um, you know, newer covenants are now coming out and saying you can't rent your house unless, on anything less than a six-month to a one-year lease term. So it's not a short, so no longer is a short-term rental, it's gotta be residential. It's got, they, they're allowing leases, but the leases have got to be at least, in many instances, six months, sometimes up to a year. Uh, so it's a true, well, so it effectively eliminates the STRs being allowed under the covenants. And, and so that's what, but that's being done, you know, and those that are going back and retrofitting that, you know, is, is being done through covenant amendments, which typically are gonna require two-thirds to three-quarters of vote of the owners that are covered by those revenues in most, in most instances. You know, it's not just a HOA board deciding on their own, that's usually gonna require an ownership vote.
I agree with private property rights, but when having some type of loose framework or even just a right, just a registration, because you're impacting other people's property rights too. And I mean.
You as a homeowner can impact your neighbor's property as well.
When, when that neighbor's property is being done, there's nowhere to go, there's, there's no homeowner, you're not coexisting, you're calling somebody that's in another city that may or may not do something.
Responsible for that.
Correct. And so having loose, at least just registering, and I'm just rentals in general, not just, so our citizens know the rules, know the whatever. They have the fire extinguishers, the fire alarms, the proper wiring. That's more of my concern is when people are coming and staying and they're staying in these homes, whether short-term or long-term, just having a rental registration in general, I think provides a service to our, to the people living here.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I think what you need to do is be sure we're keeping the topics separate. There's, because you've got STRs over here, then you've got your rental registration over here, which would apply not just to the short-term rentals, but, but actually technically wouldn't even apply to short-term rentals as such. It's gonna apply to the folks who are renting for six months, a year, five years. And so, um, and so to the extent that you're talking about rental registration programs, you have to kind of, you know, really kind of need to treat them as two different topics because they do, they do, now, a lot of the safety inspection kind of things may be similar that you do. But um, but administratively, you're probably gonna be treating them differently, you know, under different ordinances, so.
Well, I think one thing that needs to be identified in the city for sure, short-term rentals, so let's talk just short-term rentals. Um, especially for police and fire, when there's a problem, you know, they know that they're going to short-term rental. I agree with property rights. I do think that after reading a lot of articles about these short-term rentals, that there needs to be something about, something that we do for safety. Because there were lots of articles about carbon monoxide. They didn't have carbon monoxide detectors in the houses and people were getting sick and some were dying. Uh, this was in another state, but, um, so I don't have a problem with the safety stuff. I don't want a three-hour inspection on.
But at the same time, local and state code enforcement requires a lot of these things. And we already have built into our codes some of these restrictions. You've already got the noise and you've got some of the other building restrictions in here. So what are we really doing? We're, we're identifying possibly twenty-one properties and we want to regulate those twenty-one properties. And I think you're regulating a group of people that have already got regulations on them. And I think we're just, we're just piling on top of them.
Are we citing them?
Go to the rental, you can go to these sites, those companies are also responsible for monitoring and keeping their clients, the homeowners, in check. It's their responsibility to have good quality product. They're gonna survive if they have good quality product out there. Our responsibility is to serve the entire entirety of the citizenry, whether they're short-term or they're long-term. You can rent a home in Highland Village for three months if you want to. Is that a short-term rental? We wouldn't classify it as that. We could do the same thing in a three-month rental that we could in a thirty-day rental. So there, I don't see any difference. Where do you stop the regulations? You continue to add on regulations. Right now, you're, you're identifying a set group of people that you want to regulate. And I think that's wrong.
But how many citations, okay, we have regulations. Have we enforced any of them? Has anybody been cited? And I, I know one home that's been five, three issues and I don't think it's been cited once.
Let's take out the STRs and ask that same question.
But are, are you regulating a person? Are you regulating a homeowner or are you regulating a business?
You're regulating a homeowner. In this case, you're regulating a homeowner.
Don't we have nuisance laws on the books that, so why don't we enforce nuisance laws?
What we do is if you look at it with the past year, with the, the code enforcement, those, those were rectified without any kind of.
Long-term compliance.
Yeah, most of them go on. Yeah, most of the other ones were, were um, false alarms, different things like that. It was nothing that rose to the level. We had issues in the past. There used to be one on Patricia and I don't believe it's active anymore and it was a real problem. Uh, police had to go there several times to enforce parking regulations and a few things like that. Most of those were easy to do on the spot. Hey, you're blocking the driveway or things like that.
And is that a, what we don't know is, is if that is a certain age group. We all know that teens and their twenties are more active socially than most other groups, so.
This house was set up to sleep sixteen or eighteen people. It was, it was a party house.
She was designed as a party house, but there's, there's a lot of homes in this community that could become that at any moment. Even with somebody as a homeowner. Hey, I'm gonna be gone for thirty days. I'm gonna rent it out to somebody. And they don't have to go through these sites. Same things can happen. So I see if, if something like this happened, I see there's going to be a group of people that are gonna be smart enough to go, okay, so I can't do it on thirty days, let's do it for thirty-one. Or, okay, I'll create a business that buys properties, that puts them on rentals, we'll do six-month rentals. The company rents it for six months, but they sublease it for thirty days. There's ways that they would find to get around it. Are we gonna come back and regulate that as well?
Actually, actually, there are some cities whose ordinances do kind of try to plug that particular loophole that you just cited.
And we're not really talking about the single-family rental registration program.
We have, we have the, you're right, we do have the regulations on the board, but are we tracking that, you know, you know what, we've hit three calls, we've hit whatever. When do we, when do we go into the enforcement? Okay, you know what, we've been nice, whatever. Or should, should it be policy that they get cited every time? That's my thing is, you're right, we have regulations. But if it's the same offenders or the same whatever, then you, then you're dealing with everybody else's quality of.
Now you're talking about our community policing model, which I think is a different topic. Because we're gonna do that anyway. We do that with teens now. We give them multiple opportunities. We get their parents engaged. In this case, we would have to say we need to get the property owner engaged and say, this is the problem, you need to stop this. When, so I don't, I don't, I think we've already got everything that we can use to make the neighborhoods better.
Have we contacted any of the property owners and had these discussions on any of these homes in the past two years?
Because we've heard about this one family or one house.
There's two for sure.
But we've heard about those two for.
Yes.
Two years now. I would love to see an investigation just into those two. Let's find out how many times they've been called, how many times they've been cited. And are we treating them different or not treating them different? Because Councilman Hurst has brought it up and it's very valid point that if we're not addressing it and wouldn't bring it back up if it was being addressed. So let's look at those two before we look at something that is addressing fifty-five hundred rooftops.
That's fair.
Just to repeat?
There's two. I know a better repeat. And it's over and over.
But if, if, if we're not getting called anymore, we don't know.
Because I get that, but now if there's, you know, hey, this is, you know, because it usually happens on the weekends, code enforcement's there. I agree. We, we do, we should, but maybe there's a way to.
Give them the address and let them go back through the, um.
Companies like RentalScape, do they keep those types of statistics? How many times has that property been called?
I guess the city would have to tell them.
Our, our call dispatch will go back.
No, no, I'm just asking if, if, if the companies actually keep that as part of their statistical information so that they can gauge their homeowners as well.
With the monitoring, I think we can share that information with them. And so it could be communicated to the property owners.
And vice versa. Then can we reach out to them and see what kind of statistics they have, even if it's just in?
No, the calls, they would have to get that from us. And again, the only numbers I gave you were from the past year. Previous, I, I don't know those numbers. It has never been a huge number. And it is difficult too, you know, if, the marijuana thing, if, if somebody smells marijuana, you respond to it, you get there, you don't smell it anymore, you don't find anybody. That's pretty difficult.
You're right, but the storing of commercial construction vehicles in the driveway and the dangerous dogs and, I mean, there's just a list of things that again, if, if it was just, hey, call after three calls, hey, property owner, I know you're out of town, could you please rein it in? I think that would go along, maybe not have more regulations, just have a policy change that you're, maybe they're not cited, just, hey, look, I know you're not here, but could you, could you just rein it in? Because calling the, the, the property maintenance, management prob- it just goes in a black hole. And so, um, and it's not, again, it's been, I've heard from other, but it's just one of those, how do we convey that we need to be neighborly, I guess is, is what it is. And, and you're right, we do have a lot of regulations, but is there just a way to have a slight process change to track it better? And then three calls, whether citation or not, just like the teenagers, look, Joe Bob homeowner, you, you gotta knock it off. And here are some tools that might help you. Maybe something like that, the community policing report, but some way the city officially communicates with the property owner that, look. I think that's, that would be a fair way to do it because they might not even know, to be honest.
Well, you know the renters don't.
No, the renters don't. And the management company, it's in their best interest to just deal with it. So I don't know if it ever gets back to the property owners. So that's, you know, that's my.
Well, let's, let's ask if you could give a couple of the addresses, give them to Paul. Let Paul, we can look and see what kind of dispatches we've had. You could look at code enforcement, just see do we have a narrow problem. Look at that first and then decide whether we need to do beyond that.
That's a good way. I agree. Can we talk about rentals?
Yeah, yeah. With regard to the registration, and this, this would just be another way to do it. I think this would be kind of the basics. Is that you require the registration, uh, we, we do the identification, monitoring and reporting with RentalScape. And then inspection services again, we could have a third party do that or we could do it. And, and really just looking at a cost recovery model there, don't collect hotel motel tax. Roughly, that's roughly covering the cost right there, whether we inspect it or somebody else inspects it. In that model, you would have the information to the property owners, you could make sure they display everything properly. But you wouldn't go through the process of collecting the hotel motel.
Some question, I guess for Kevin. If the city is inspecting a property that's rented out to a short-term renter, what liability does the city accept or warrant by inspecting that property for safety?
It doesn't, I mean, it, it does. Take on, it's governmental function and so there, there's immunity there. The, now, that doesn't prevent suits because what all, of course, as we all know, even though cities immune, it's, it's not uncommon for people say, let's say a hot water heater blows up in the middle, you know, we've inspected the property. Or, you know, somebody between inspections takes a smoke detector out or takes the battery out of a smoke detector and, you know, we hadn't gone back in and checked it, you know, as part of an inspection. Um, you know, city people, and then somebody gets hurt or fired. You know, we, we're gonna get a inquiry on our inspection records uh, for what we inspected, when we inspected, what we found, what we didn't find, and if they, and if we, an inspector missed something, then somebody's gonna blame us too, along with everybody else, because that's typically how lawsuits happen. I mean, it's, it's not uncommon.
Can we get away from that by having a third party do the inspections for us?
Not necessarily, because they effectively, there's, there'd be some kind of indemnification agreement we would have with the inspector, but, but even, even so, that, that doesn't actually prevent the city from getting sued because they're effectively our contractor. And then we would just look to the contractor's indemnification and insurance, you know, with respect to the work they're done, that we would typically get in a, by the services.
Or do, do we currently require any property owner who engages in a rental of their property to register with the city? So I could rent my property without registration with the city. Six and a half months down the road, they have a blowout party. It's the same situation we're talking about with these. So in that instance, if we require registration for short-term rentals, but we don't on six-month or longer or three-month or longer rentals, which there are three-month rental agreements out there. Do we bear some liability from a discrimination lawsuit that we're not treating all the rental properties the same?
No. You know, renters are not a protected class.
No, but the property owners are.
No, not really. Um, it, it, they're not in a protected class such that, uh, you know, in the constitutional sense, when it comes to that kind of a different, differential treatment. Um, now, politically, different story. So that's something, you know, just as a policy matter, do you view yourself being consistent?
But if we require a short-term rental and we do inspections on them and we find something in the inspection and require them to upgrade the property, right? And we don't do that with a three, six or annual rental.
Well, it's, it's a little bit different. There's a little bit of difference between the two, um, and I can see a logical difference because again, your short-term renters are that short-term, you know, they're not bringing their own furniture, they're not, you know, they're, they're not, you know, they're not residents as such. Um, and so they're not, they don't have quite the vested interest in the property as even a six-month renter would have, um, for that reason.
And I would argue that any renter doesn't have a vested interest.
Well, and a six-month renter's not gonna have the same investment in the property as somebody who owns the property. I mean, there's, there's that kind of level step up depending on, you know, how long you're staying with the property, how much of your value, you know, your expenses are tied to it, whatever. So, so there's a rational basis for differentiating regulations. Uh, but, you know, but some of the issues that deal with renters are, you know, whether it be short-term renters or renters generally, longer-term renters, are, are the same. I mean, you know, a lot of it's always over property conditions. It's, it's gonna be, you know, who's taking care of the grass? Is the renter taking care of the grass? Landlord, I mean, those kind of things, you know, the trash out front.
It seems to me that that's the biggest issue that we have with short-term rentals right now. The house isn't being maintained or there's too much noise. You know, we can get the same, we can get the same complaints with long-term homeowners. Uh, some of the people in the community in the past haven't taken care of their yards and we've had to step in and.
Of course you get, of course you get the same complaint with res, you know, owner arguments too. I mean, so, I mean, and so it's, you know, when you're talking about those kinds of complaints, you know, my experience is it doesn't really, there's, there's not a huge difference in the regulations because you could, because you can enforce the same, you know, weed law, you know, trash, you know, property condition, whether it's a short-term rental property or, and, and again, those are more property conditions. Noise issues can be applied to anybody. It doesn't matter whether they're there for a weekend or for two years. Um, or on it.
And this is where it comes back to what John stated earlier. Let's find out what those complaints are. If they are trash or they are noise, then.
Yeah.
What are we doing?
See, I would think for inspections, it actually would be more important for our long-term renters. Because that gets into the health, safety. Because that gets into the health, safety, and welfare and the condition of the property.
And in fact, there's, of course, the other thing about that is, there are provisions in, in Texas Property Code regarding landlord-tenant that impose certain property conditions, non-wavable certain property condition requirements that landlords are responsible for. Locks, you know, window locks, um, fire, you know, fire, you know, smoke detectors and stuff like that. You know, those kind of health and safety things that are dictated and required under the property code. Now, most, I, I'll just say unless you're just a little bit more sophisticated property owner and landlord, the truth is, most people don't know that and don't pay attention to it, which then kind of gets to.
If you're a, if you're an individual.
If you're an individual that's renting your house.
Active manager.
Yeah.
If you engage a management company.
Right, they're gonna know those things.
They're gonna know those things.
But I'd venture to say probably the most, most of the folks renting homes probably aren't engaging either a, a management company or real estate agent who's involved in, who does, you know, lease properties to, who would know those.
But they're assuming that, they're, they're accepting the risk in that situation as well.
Right.
Both sides, yes, both sides.
But, but those of us who do a lot of real estate, we also know a lot of property owners are not sophisticated enough to even think what state law it requires them to do. I mean, just realistically, they're really oblivious to it.
I'm not gonna say oblivious, they're more ignorant of the law than they are of anything else.
Right, right.
Well, I think the consensus is that, like John suggested, we get those addresses, we look at the history of those. If we have ordinances already in place, after a certain point, then enforce it.
It's enforce it too.
No, you know, we have a ton of ordinances on the books that there's no teeth in, and what, what is, so.
And possibly track other, other rental violations.
And I can't go back.
I got letters, mow your grass.
I can't go back that far really, because we've only been keeping these records for maybe two years, two and a half years. And again, most of the complaints, they're, it's a parking violation, it's a noise violation. We've had a couple of trash violations, we had a guard light that was shining at the neighbors, they fixed that. It's nothing, I can't say there's one, with the exception of the one that was on Patricia, repeatedly was having parties, because they allowed sixteen or eighteen people to stay there.
It was really nothing of a, a major security or safety issue though?
No, it was just the loud noise. So that's, that's generally what it has been. Again, a complaint that any homeowner could be guilty of as well.
Interested in seeing the documentation then.
Let's take the specific ones.
Yeah.
And then, and let's burrow into those.
And we can identify the ordinances that are being whatever, and then, then at least, then can be just enforced, you know? And so, so both sides can enjoy their property without it. I, I still think though, our long-term renters should have some type of inspection program, just for safety. I don't know if we're gonna go on to that, but I, I do, because there's, there's some long-term, there's one, I know there's one house in our neighborhood where they rent rooms to each family. There's a family per room, there's seven bedrooms in that house. And I can tell you, it's not up to code for nothing. There's stuff like that, that if we had something to at least monitor what's going on, not to be big brother, but just, if you have that many people in a home, it would be nice to know at least there's fire detectors.
Do deed restrictions cover that in some areas?
Well, not really. I mean, they might.
Depends on the neighborhood and how they're constructed.
Depends on the covenants, but again, your, your, your restrictive covenants and HOAs are only as good as the board that's willing, and the board that's willing to enforce it, and the owners in the subdivision, they're willing to back up the board when it comes to doing that enforcement.
And I know with a lot of the HOA restrictive governments, they will specify that issue.
Yeah.
It seems to me it would be in the areas that are not covered by an HOA in this community.
Half of our city, over half, if Montclair's not one, is not covered with that. Indeed restrictions are really property rights. If, if, if I wanna go after whatever, then it's a property rights issue. But when you have a lot of people in a home, having it registered, and at least knowing that they have fire detectors and carbon dioxide and fire extinguishers would be helpful. I mean, I just don't wanna wait. There's more than one, but there's one in particular, any day that house is gonna be on the news, I promise you it will be.
Give Paul that number. Because that would also imply there's probably cars associated with each one of those. And we have regulations for it, on-street, off-street parking.
Well, we can park overnight on the streets. And our, and our, and the non-HOAs, they can, but there's, that's where I'm coming from, is the older section, you're seeing things, and it's just to have a little more of a process and really the long-term renters to take care of them, not to get anybody's business, but just.
I think getting, I think get the information, let's go from there.
Do you have something on long-term?
I, I do, yeah.
Let's see.
Let's see. That was just a brief description of the hotel occupancy tax, cities can charge up to six percent. Um, we'd have to pass a ordinance to notify the comptroller's office.
Are they currently paying the six percent and it's going to the state?
No.
Or they're not paying at all?
No.
Paying at all.
Okay. There's a, there's a separate state tax. So there's two, two components of a hotel motel tax whenever you go pay it, you go, once, once you pay seven percent to the state.
The others, because that's about twelve or thirteen percent, right?
Eight percent. It's eight percent to the state.
Well, some cities have the special ones.
Does the state get theirs automatically?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, do we have to pass something?
No, we don't have to pass it.
Do they automatically get their cut? Okay, that was my question.
If they're, if they fall within the definitions for purposes of collecting it, yes, they have to, they have to pay the state.
If the city portion, it is different than your regular sales tax. Of course, the, you pay your sales tax to the comptroller's office, hotel motel tax goes directly to the city. So we'd be getting conceivably twenty-one checks a month, or a quarter, maybe a quarter, as small as those are. And again, revenue must be used for more tourism and convention and hotel industry, which we don't have a convention center, we don't have a hotel, um, but come stay at Airbnb's.
Ten thousand dollars a year, that'll, that'll buy you a lot of bonds.
So I think getting to the end of this with just some options, adopt an inspection program with the tax, and the city inspects the short-term rentals or uses a third party? Or do we require registration with no hot tax, and the city or third party inspects? Or do we require registration with no hot tax? Uh, some cities do this, they don't require an inspection, they just say, here's what you gotta do, you're on the owner's system. Uh, I think the main reason there is to get the ownership information.
Even having that, just having a thing on our website of FAQs, and so people know. I mean, I know I'm a nerd, but when we go stay at places, I like to look, is it registered? Because I don't want, you know, but is it registered and who do, who do you apply that to?
Well, I think consensus is, well, look at those ones, see what they are, and then, and see if it's ordinances that we can enforce at this point.
And again, most of them are, but really with the complaints that we were getting, it, it's just, it's just spot enforcement. Hey, move your car, hey, turn the volume down.
Hey, maybe we should start writing big tickets for those. We need revenue. Okay, anybody else have any questions, comments on this? We're gonna move on to receive a presentation and discuss potential legislative issues.
Oh, no, I've seen.
Still got the long-term rental.
I'll cut to, I'll cut to seven thirty.
I mean, do we wanna, I might ask that we go to the legislating priorities, and then if we have time to come back to this?
For doing it in late workday?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I have a feeling some of those legislative priorities might actually impact this conference. They, with regards to S T L.
Not that we don't wanna see that, but I don't wanna.
No, I think that's important. Now that all the legislators are settled.
Okay, so we're gonna receive a presentation to discuss potential legislative issues on the eighty-nine Texas legislative session.
You were, you were right on the line.
I love it when you say that.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Well, Ken's pulling that up, Lori is handing out the, the brochure that, that we normally print out to, to give to our legislators and others when we're in Austin. And this is in draft form, so if we make any changes tonight, we can certainly do that. I think I had mentioned in the memo that I sent you guys a few weeks ago, and maybe in the, in the agenda briefing, really taking a little bit of a different approach. In the past, we've had six different areas of concern. A lot of those were broader policy statements. However, I think this legislative session, there are some very critical items, and I think those would need to be the ones that we really focus on. And, and this is just kind of a little bit of a statement, that, that how we feel, cities are the level of government most connected to, and thus most accountable to, the people they serve. As a result, the state should recognize and preserve local authority and support cities in the mission of providing quality local services to all Texans. And another part of that is protecting our unique quality of life. Uh, cities are the level of government that is closest to the people it serves, and therefore are the level of government best able to identify the needs of a community and appropriate means to address those needs. While state government should be a resource for cities, decision-making authorities should be placed at the municipal level whenever possible, whenever reasonable. So here's one of the big ones, is minimum lot sizes. Last session, HB thirty-nine twenty-one and SB seventeen eighty-seven were filed. Our understanding is that had they not been caught up with school vouchers, that this probably would have passed. And it states that a municipality may not adopt or enforce an ordinance rule or other measure that requires a residential lot to be, and here we go, larger than fourteen hundred square feet, that's the lot size, not the house size, wider than twenty feet or deeper than sixty feet, density less than thirty-one point one units per acre, setback greater than five feet. That is five feet, front, back, and side. We could not require covered parking, we could not require more than one parking space per unit, we can have no regulations on off-site parking. That's a development in the San Antonio area. If you, you can find Lenar's website, and you can, you can see these homes that are being built. They're a two-story shotgun house, essentially is what they are. They're, they're very small. You can see that little compact car right there taking up the entire driveway, and then your trash cans, it's, uh, pretty, pretty tight.
Is that a build-to-rent community?
That is not.
No, it's not?
Lenar's selling these, they're about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars a house.
Um, LGI just, uh, finished the, their version of that up in Princeton as well.
There's one in Oak Point, that's got the trailer, the, the home on top, it's on, and then underneath is the garage.
Yeah.
So there's no, no park, no garage.
No garage.
They require. Many cities, the smaller cities have been talking about this for the past couple of months. I'm on a couple of their committees, and they've been discussing to have a population, you know, if, if this is, if it's going through, I think it's Senator Benton Court that's pushing this out of Sugarland.
Oh, yeah.
To say, great, just like any other legislation, if you have a population under X or Y, um, and if you read most legislation, there's a carve-out for somebody for something. Um, a lot of the communities have been discussing, baying together, saying, okay, this is going through, please, you know, these smaller communities don't have the resources to deal with this, and, and put a population cap on it.
That's a good point.
That's been the discussion with a, a lot of the communities in North Texas, in, in Collin County.
But even, but ultimately, over time, even the brackets go away. That's, that becomes a, that ultimately is kind of one of the dilemmas. What's in the book?
This is the mayor's.
Yeah, but we're, we're built out, so if they have a fifty.
We've got seventy-four acres.
No, but if we, if the population, if it's a fifty thousand person cap, we're not hitting that, that's what I'm saying. If we cap it, but, um, and having something like this and, and being, you know, with more detail on how this would affect it, you know, when, when I, I'd love to have a box of these when I go down, because I go down a lot and say, hey, Ben Court, let's talk. I mean.
So hypothetically, so hypothetically speaking, if I live in Highland Village, don't live in an HOA, I have an acre of land, so I'm not deed restricted. If this were to pass, would I be able to build thirty-one homes on my property? In, in the middle of Doubletree, if I had an acre.
You couldn't do anything about it.
Could I buy two lots and do sixty-four homes in the middle?
I can take my, my lot that's almost half an acre, and I could put twenty, or fifteen, fifteen homes on it.
And there are several homes.
If that were to pass, there's nothing.
Couple of homes in this community that own five, six, seven acres, right in the heart of the city that can do that.
But I'm, but I'm being, you know, serious here when I ask this, are there any ordinances? Are there any things that we could do with the city?
No, that's the point.
Well, our waters.
I mean, like any fire, any inspection, any, anything from a police, I mean.
The only, the only thing that has been stated is, of course, adequate water sewer in storm drainage. Would they can meet those requirements?
If our water system is, is built out and done, can't connect to it, and our sewer system is built out and done, I mean, I'm sure we can have studies done showing we're at capacity. Any more connections, it hurts our water.
Well, but you're, you, unfortunately, you'd almost have to change the moratorium laws too. Because, you know, and those studies aren't cheap. And that's, you know, just the mere fact that it would change the face of certain communities. And change the face of Highland Village to the extent somebody were to come in and buy up a bunch of property on the, you know, old areas of town and redevelop it.
And it's all under the guise of affordable housing.
So you, you, you said, and redeveloped, so if you had an investor with deep pockets and came up off of Highland Village Road and bought the last three properties east of Edible, which are essentially one, two-acre properties, maybe more, they could turn all of that into as many number of these properties as they can get on.
Notwithstanding any zoning ordinance we have on the books, yes, they could.
Does that apply to historical districts and special districts?
I don't know that it's, I don't know that it.
I'm just saying.
There was, there was nothing in the legislation the last time, the one thing regarding the brackets was, it was if it was a county. Any municipality in a county of three-hundred thousand and more would fall under these rules. And of course, Dent County's a million, so.
Well, the problem is, I mean, if, if they do this, they're gonna make the law so vague that it would tie us up in litigation anyway, with lawsuits, I mean.
Of course, they removed the building materials.
But the building materials did survive under historical and overlay districts.
It did, they did have the car up for those. And, and, you know, and, and if the city actually had thought to adopt those kind of regulations, identify those area towns, then they were fine. But that only applied to certain areas and, that they could, that they had previously identified before the effective date of the act. And so, um, so you had to, again, you kind of had to be careful about that.
Well, obviously.
Some, you know, some, yeah, some cities did do that.
But that might be a loophole.
Well, if it's in the statute, if it's in the bill.
Right, I haven't, I haven't seen any text other than those bills, they haven't written, they haven't let it out yet. They're just, they're, just like the voucher bill, they're recycling from last year.
So going back to your point, then, this would be our number one concern.
Absolutely, would one of, one of them, but yeah, number one.
Type of regulation, yeah.
What else do we get to look at?
Okay, one B. Oppose the right to build accessory dwelling units with no restrictions. We currently have an approval process for accessory dwelling units, sometimes easier referred to as the mother-in-law houses. Uh, we've met with a property owner here recently who's gonna do something like this. It's a great idea, and, and I think there's a need for it, particularly with, with all of us aging and maybe wanting our parents or in-laws closer, maybe not, but.
Looking at me when you say age?
I wasn't looking at you. But we, we have guidelines now, setback requirements and things like that. This would create parking, drainage, roadway, infrastructure, appropriate setback issues. It takes away the ability for the city to mitigate problems that can affect existing neighborhoods. And, you know, we talk about the short-term rentals and the parties on a temporary basis. This could be on a permanent basis.
In most, in most ordinances, most cities that have ordinances that, you know, either, either require conditional, yes, special use permits, or, you know, in, in Midlothian, for example, we were getting so many of these on some of, with respect to larger lots that we had in Midlothian, that we actually just went ahead and did a set of standards, that if your property's X size, and you can meet all the setbacks, and it doesn't exceed a certain, and, but here's the thing, and the people occupying it are, are related to or working for the people who are occupying the main structure. So there's some kind of familial relationship or, or employment relationship between the main, the folks who own or lease, and, and the way we wrote in Midlothian, or lease, so that at least it's not creating a, effectively, a rental unit on the property. so that at least it's not creating a, effectively, a rental unit on the property. As I recall, there's no such restrictions or allowances for that kind of restriction that would be proposed for this order of...
And you could, I believe the way it was written, you could subdivide your property three times to, to do accessory dwelling units. So not just one, you could do multiple.
Well, it really wouldn't be subdivided. They wouldn't have subdivided. They could just build it.
Stick it on there.
So now you go back to the short-term rentals, because I could take three of these little Amazon shacks that I can, you know, 300 square feet, I could put three in their backyard, and I could rent all three of those out.
Pretty much.
You could.
Yes, sir.
Pretty much.
And this, of course, California passed this. It's under a legal challenge right now. I think the larger cities in California challenged it, so we'll see how that... I'm sorry. Oh, the accessory dwelling.
California eliminated all single families early, and we see how well that's turning out for them.
Yeah.
They're all coming here.
And I understand there's an affordable housing crisis, but the, it's, it's a man-made crisis. So I don't know why we need a charter.
Why would you adopt anything that California proposed?
Do not Californicate my Texas.
And the thing is, these are... Yes.
I am very low on that. I would be making many trips down there on many topics.
I'm sure.
So we couldn't even limit each homeowner to 1/800. That would, that would remove that ability for us to do that.
Well, as it was, you know, and I don't have the previous bill committed memory, but as I recall, Paul read it more recently than I did, yeah, that's right.
So...
If it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We know it's going to tax our police, our fire, public systems. If, if this happened, does it give us the ability to at least get tax on the additional structures on the building?
Yeah.
That this property tax will be able to gain off of, because it has to be permitted. It has to be built. Do we get any type of impact fees as well?
The one thing the bear was asking me, because if you do an accessory dwelling unit now, you're on the same meter.
Yeah, so you're not, you're not...
Well, I don't, yes, but we, yeah, but it may not be, you have to be on the same meter. You know, that's something where I'm not sure about on this. But it does create a situation where we, you know, you're not creating new lots, which is a problem, which brings the question, can you change that calculation and add, you know, charge somebody an impact fee? Because there's provision in the impact fee statute that allows for adjustment and additional impact fees being done when you're dividing up the units into more units. I don't know, you know, again, as often happens in stuff like this, there's an unintended consequence, they don't pay attention to a lot of the other integrated type of development statutes that we have, that we have to deal with at local level.
And I would assume if you had to go from a 3/4 by 5/8 meter up to a 2-inch, you could pay that difference in impact fees, but is that, is that going to be much revenue?
Yeah, residential meter can handle a triplex. I mean, it's not, let's just be honest. I mean, and if it's not separate ownership, typically when you're dealing with meters and, and all that stuff, one meter per address.
Yeah.
And so, I'm just trying to figure out how I put one of these in my front yard. I mean, I got a 30-foot front yard, and heck, I could stick it in there right now.
So during TML, they'd actually indicated that this one was probably closer to passing than tiny lots. And they also indicated that quite a few of the legislators that fought against it during the last legislation session, legislative session, were no longer in this one. So it might actually have a better chance of passing this time.
Casinos, vouchers, and tiny lots.
Casinos, that's...
Yes.
That's a money maker.
Go through a few of the others. With regard to finance category, we do want to be able to maintain certificates of obligation as a viable financing mechanism. There's been discussion about them all having to be voter-approved and having to be counted as M and O if it's not voter-approved. We certainly don't want that to happen, and we do not want any more changes to the appraisal cap situation.
Can we, do we or an official whatever send it to our three legislators as well after we have this discussion in the next month? Like officially send them, look, Parker Little and Hayes? Well, but if we do it, other ones do it, I'm just saying, to at least make it official than just talk.
And we, that, that's exactly what we've done in the past. We've had meetings with them. I spoke to Senator Parker briefly, and I said, we really need to have a discussion before the session starts. I know the mayor was in a meeting with...
Hayes, not, not the ones that are there now, not the ones that are...
Yeah, so, and we'd had that other conversation with Mitch Little, so...
And we'll have, we can schedule more meetings with them and sit down.
We have a mayor's meeting anytime soon with Andy Hayes leading?
We did. We just did.
Did you talk about?
Yeah, they were, we didn't, we didn't talk about our legislative agendas, but we talked about these items. We already knew that they were coming down and vouchers.
So they're all kind of in sync?
Right.
If we get the whole county at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Wood, is, Wood and Lewisville didn't be in sync with this, or...
Louisville doesn't, Denton, from what I understand, they want to be able to control where they put things, and they've got, remember, they've got their environmentalists they deal with. So that's a big thing. But I've spoken with Harper, Little, Hayes, Parker, and Baumgartner on all of these issues, and they're, they're against it.
And Flower Mound has adopted pretty much the, the same things. You, you, the one thing about it is, I think when we were at TML, you know, when TML was speaking, is that if San Antonio wants to do this, great, let them do it. If Houston wants to do it, that's fine, but don't force them on everybody.
They want to drag us down with it. That's the problem, is the big cities want this, but they want to drag us down and ruin our quality of life, so we're all suffering.
What, do you know what the stance of Denton is?
I'll, I'll find out.
The stance of Denton, what does, what does Denton feel about this? Are they in the camp with Dallas and San Antonio, or they...
My experience with them is they love their unified development code. They love their regulations.
What else is the government trying to force down?
Let's go on.
Those two are excited.
Yeah, no kidding.
But wait, there's more.
There's more.
In this topic, of course, you could say, well, school finance, it doesn't affect us. But I think right now, when we look at what Louisville, as he's going through, it does affect us.
I think these, these are intertwined issues now.
Very much are. So just an encouragement of at least increasing the basic allotment per student funding to keep up with inflation, which they have not had an increase in their per student fundings since 2010.
I've had very long conversations with people in the education committee and all of the state legislator. Apparently, you can't just change it. The school finance in Texas is like a Rubik's Cube of, nobody can sit down and tell you A plus B plus C. And hopefully, they'll untwine it and just, if they just blow everything up and say, okay, but I've tried to, and nobody can actually put together where all the money, it is the most, I have never, and I love math.
Well, you know, the Edgewood cases are the ones that, you know, started all this years ago, and, you know, how you had all the Robin Hood plans and all that, and that's...
They changed the name.
I know. Still, Robin Hood plans are a little concerned.
Was that politically incorrect to say Robin Hood?
And, you know, and it's just gotten more complicated since.
It's a mess.
Yeah.
Dr. Rapp's got a good presentation that talks about the different pennies, gold pennies, silver pennies, and, and how they all roll together. So I mean, you could get a reasonable explanation of it. It's like, listen to Ken talking about our not-to-exceed-value tax something.
It's just digging through the regu, it's digging through the regulations that mandates, digging through the regulations that mandates all of that, it is, it is a hot mess. So you're right, they have all it up, but if you look behind the curtain, the regulations are so tortured, it's, it's amazing that they get it all up.
I think we have two more. The other one, community censorship, and of course, the legislators had their eyes on TML for a long time. If we did not have TML and other associations, these bills would pass without our, our knowledge. It would happen all the time. We have to be informed to communicate with our legislators. So I, I think it's important that we continue to focus on that.
The lobbying and the TMLs and all, we have TML helping us, but they're also helping Dallas and Houston. Isn't that kind of, I don't know, shooting ourselves in the foot?
What, what they normally...
That's where I want to know the difference.
What they normally do with legislation, for instance, the, the sales tax, be it the delivery point or the, what's the other term?
Warehouse or the...
Essentially that, yeah. Whoever gets the sales tax. On issues like that, where they know cities are divided, because of course Louisville with their warehouses, Capel with their warehouses, they feel one way. We want Amazon and everything else to come our way. So on those things, they, they stay out of that. So if it's something that's a big conflict between cities, they, they take a new stance on it.
Sounds like this is, the density is a big conflict. I'm just...
I'm not sure if it is, because...
Pay and make sure they're representing us and at least have a firewall between the big cities. Because we don't, there's urban, people love urban, people, I'm a suburban girl, I'm not an urban girl, I'm not a country girl. And we should all have that choice, so we shouldn't have it ruined because cities want to ruin their cities.
And I think that's the way TML's approached it, because of course, again, those homes are being built in Houston and San Antonio, probably Dallas. If they want to change the ordinance to do that, that's great. But if we want to keep our ordinance where it's a 6,000-square-foot lot minimum, we should be able to do that.
Who do we use other than TML? Do we use other groups?
Sometimes some of the other professional associations, particularly police and fire if an issue's come up, they've got that information. Building officials, different things. And then May elections.
Yes.
You know, there used to be four uniform election dates. Now there's only two. There has been a big press to make it only one in November. We've traditionally been in May, and that, that does allow our voters to focus solely on council elections and other city ballot initiatives. And if it were in November, you know, think about this last election, it'd be lost at the end of the ballot behind your presidential election all the way through the national and state level, so...
We really need to give Jimmy Bassinger, you know, more work.
Yeah. It's funny, because last session, a bill was passed because the colony, for some reason, when it was formed, had to have elections in November. And last session, there was a bill and they were added to it where they can now have May elections. And if you go down south to like Corpus Christi and all, their city elections are in November. There's, so I thought all Texas did May, but it depends on where you live.
There's quite a few cities that do November.
Yeah, some do.
Now, a lot of them, you know, now they may be off, off-year elections from the statewide, you know, so they may be in odd-year numbers as opposed to the even-numbered years where they're, you know, we conflict in statewide and national election. But not always.
Who's pushing this?
That I don't know. I could look and find out, because it was...
Me, I'm pushing this.
Oh, you mean as far as changing this to November?
Yeah, no, I just want to know the legislator. I, I, you think I'll go knock on their, I have no problem.
I'll, I can look.
Part of, part of the issue too is keep in mind, municipal elections, although you can make them, there is provision in the election code to allow them, you know, candidates to be partisan elections are, are by default non-partisan.
Right.
And so, one of the things, I think one of the reasons folks, many folks have been against moving to November, particularly if it falls into a statewide or national election year, is it all, it has the tendency to make the local elections turn into partisan elections.
That's exactly what's happened down south.
And which I think is, is, and that may, you know, to answer your question, that may be one here too.
So while I was down, while I was down there, and I was like, there's all these mayor signs and all, and it wasn't just one, the big city, it was some of the little ones, and they all declared what they were. And it's, especially in your smaller communities, regardless of what you are, you have to represent anybody, everybody, and you're a smaller family. So when you get into these big cities, it's, it's a totally different animal.
Well, especially when you're, when you're still a city, you know, they're, they're still cities, that they do all that large elections, as opposed to city, much place or district, so...
That was it.
Okay, this is good. Then everybody, they're ready to give it these?
Me, can you come by and pick up some if we're going to Austin?
Yeah, once we get them, they'll be printed on nice paper also. Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly make sure you have as many as you can carry.
You don't think I'm not going to knock on their doors? Oh, I will.
Thank you.
Are we going to try to knock out some long-term?
In six minutes?
Let's do it at the end. Why not?
No. Next work session.
Oh, no, we need to knock it out tonight, put it to bed, on the long, the long-term rentals. What do you have, any?
We're not even putting S T R to bed.
You, can we...
Yeah, maybe we should chug through S T R and see how that shakes out.
But, and, and my one preference would be, if we go in a direction to adopt both of these, let's do one at a time. That would be much easier.
Well, then, let's, let's put off the long-term then. It's not, yeah, I like that idea. Shake out the short terms and then we'll decide.
Okay.
That work, guys? You all good? Everybody with me? Shake your hands.
Sure.
All right, clarification on consent or action items on today's city council meeting. Anybody got anything? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay. We, do not, do not have any consent?
No.
We're yuring at 7:25, we'll be back at 7:30.
Good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is November the 12th. It is 7:35. And we are going to get started with Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Brian Fierrenza. He's going to lead us in prayer.
Welcome, everybody. Would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Almighty God, we gather here today to serve and lead our community with open hearts and steadfast purpose. We seek your wisdom as we make decisions that will impact the lives of those we serve. Today, we take special time to remember and honor those who have served selflessly and given their lives for the safety and freedom of others. We remember our veterans who have defended our nation and sacrificed greatly, as well as our city first responders, the police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel, who daily put their lives on the line for us. We ask that you bless those who continue to serve and comfort the families of those who have fallen. To all our veterans, first responders, and families who have given the ultimate sacrifice, we thank you. May we continue to, continue to honor your legacy not only with words, but out with our actions. Let this community strive always to uphold the values you fought to protect and to be a place worthy of your sacrifice. Guide our hearts and actions so we may honor their legacies with compassion and dedication. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. This is, this is going to bother me.
Where's your Madonna mic?
Uh, the Madonna, the Madonna microphone gave me a headache.
Early retirement.
So, my rock star microphone, uh, gave me a bad headache. So we went back to this until they can stretch it out and make it bigger. So, all right. Well, we are going to move on to mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Counsel, does anybody have anything they would like to?
Do you want to mention the meeting on Thursday?
Okay, I will. Do you go right here?
Okay. Um, to everybody who is, um, in the Highland Village Elementary attendance zone, there is a meeting at Marcus High School on November 14th. However, you cannot just show up and speak. If you want to speak at that meeting, you must go online at lasd.net and you have to register to speak before noon tomorrow, November 13th. The format of the meeting is only, is like a regular school board meeting. You'll have three minutes to say what you want to say. There will be no discussion and no talking back and forth. So it's really just literally listening to it. You'll have to limit your comments to three minutes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just real quick, if I could have Lori come up here, I've got a laptop, but I don't have a password.
Oh, Lori. Absolutely. We can make that happen.
Thank you.
And yesterday, we had our veterans luncheon, um, room full of veterans. It was amazing. I love that, that program that we do. And, um, I failed to mention that yesterday was Lori Mullins's birthday.
Ooh.
Yes.
Happy birthday.
So we want to say happy birthday to Lori Mullins.
We're going to sing, right?
I'm not, but if you want to, you go for it.
And at the veterans luncheon, the oldest veteran, I think he was a World War II veteran, 99, I think he turns 100 next week.
Yeah.
Um, so we had, I think we had veterans in their 30s, all the way up to 19, to 99 years old at that, um, at the luncheon. So it was cool to see all the generations.
It was. It was a great, a great thing. Anybody else?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to move on then to city manager and staff reports. Hang on one second.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay. City manager and staff reports.
Mayor, I've just got one thing, and then we have a village report. I, I was informed today that Thanksgiving is right around the corner. So, uh, city offices will be closed November, Thanksgiving day, November 28th and Friday, the 29th. As of normal trash pickup during that time, the Thursday trash route pickup will be delayed one day, meaning it will be picked up on Friday. And then Friday's routes will be picked up on Saturday.
Perfect. It is right around the corner. Okay. And then do we have a thing?
Welcome to the Shops at Highland Village for this village report. In this year's Our Village Glows, the shops will unveil their newly renovated space, the backyard. And at that space, you'll also get to experience the newly decorated spectacular Christmas tree. You won't want to miss it. We're excited to partner again this year with the Highland Village Women's Club and the Shops at Highland Village to experience Our Village Glows on Saturday, November 23rd, beginning at 5:30 PM. All your favorites are back, including musical entertainment, horse-drawn carriage rides, face painting, cookie decorating, ornament making, and Santa's arrival by fire truck. Plus, rifle tickets will be sold and the lucky family will join Santa onstage to light the tree. The evening concludes with the Rosanna Eckert Jazz Quartet playing holiday classics. See you in the newly renovated courtyard for this wonderful holiday tradition. The Grinch returns to Highland Village on December 13th for Wind Down with the Grinch. This 21 and up event is the perfect date night away from the kids. With music, adult beverages, dinner, and an appearance by the Grinch himself, Wind Down with the Grinch is from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM and held at the Sergeant Oliver Event Center at Doubletree Ranch Park. You better get your tickets early. This event will sell out. Celebrate the beginning of the holiday season at Christmas at the Ranch on December 14. With bounce houses, reindeer, ice hills, food vendors, Santa himself, and many other activities, Doubletree Ranch Park will be the place to be. Join us at Christmas at the Ranch on December 14. Make your plans to visit Doubletree Ranch Park throughout the holiday season as it becomes a winter wonderland with Christmas lights and various lawn ornaments. It's also a great place to snap that holiday photo for your family Christmas card. This holiday season, remember to support your local community and shop local. Highland Village has so much to offer. I'm Taylor. Thank you for joining us and we'll see you next time.
Do we need to show that again?
That was perfect. That was absolutely, the, the Grinch will make his appearance again. And whose picture popped up?
Yep, for sure.
All right. Well, I'm sorry.
RSVP this one time.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm sorry I laughed out loud and blew everybody's ears out, but that was funny. Okay. Do we have anything else? Is that good? Going to move on to visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address the council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary. Do we have any?
I have some for item 16.
They want to wait and do on item 16. Okay. Any, but none. Okay, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda item. So on that consent agenda item, it is number 12, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on September 24th, 2024. Number 13, consider ordinance 2024-1319, amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance and map by amending the regulations of Plan Development Number 2012-1, P D 2012-1 relating to the development and use of Building Two located Lot 5 Block A, the District of Highland Village, commonly known as Bowery Park, and authorizing an amendment regarding maximum residential density regulations. This is the second and final read. And number 14, receive investment reports for quarter ending September 30th, 2024. And Mr. Fierrenza, do you, you want to?
Do I just abstain or recuse?
I recuse myself.
Okay. I recuse myself for reasons previously discussed.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. So, Mr. Feaster?
Don't go too far.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agenda items 12, 13, and 14 as read.
Thank you. Counsel, do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. So, Counsel, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Carrie, 6-0. Action agenda, we did not meet in closed session, so we're going to move on. Get Robert, I mean, Brian has a chance to come back. Consider Resolution 2024-3158 urging the Louisville Independent School District Board of Trustees to consider all available options in lieu of closing Highland Village Elementary School. Um, Counsel, does, um, do I have, do I have a motion?
Do we want to let them speak?
I'm sorry?
We had speakers for 16.
Oh, we do, we do have, huh? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I forgot. Absolutely. We will let sisters, thank you, Rhonda.
You need a math nerd for something.
That's right. Uh, Mr. Delvig does not wish to speak, but he is, please record my support record. So that will go on, on the record that he does not wish to speak, but he is in support of the resolution. And I have Matt Ensland. If you will just come up and state your name and address for the record.
All right. Can you all hear me okay?
Perfect.
All right. My name is Matthew Ensland, 525 Doubletree here in Highland Village. I'm just going to read a few points from my phone here. I'm speaking today in support of the resolution to encourage the LASD to keep Highland Village Elementary open. HVE is one of five schools identified by the LASD to close, one per feeder pattern, as they cite declining enrollment and budgetary issues brought on by the state. I'm just going to go through a few points here. You probably already know a lot of these, but so everybody in the room hears them. The budgetary item is currently represented by a budget deficit of less than 1% of the annual operating budget. And I won't leave out the complication of not being able to give staff raises at this time, though the $4.5 million deficit has been what the district keeps referring back to. Low enrollment, they refer to, and that you've seen published, is nearly a 30% decline from our optimal capacity. But in reality, the LASD has never operated at optimal capacity. And we have a closer to 15% decline from our highest enrollment, probably in the early 2000s. Young families are slow to move into the district due to housing prices. But what a lot of us believe the district has failed to realize is that Old Highland Village, and a small part of Louisville served by Highland Village Elementary, is the most affordable path into the Marcus feeder pattern, thereby making the most eligible neighborhoods less desirable for young families if Highland Village Elementary is closed. Old Highland Village was literally designed around Highland Village Elementary. Streets end at it. Most kids can walk or ride bikes to it. All of these kids will be bused, or parents driving 10 minutes opposite a major highway, reducing family time, and an overall negative impact, the quality of life, for Old Highland Village families with elementary school students. Closing the school was dead in the heart of Old Highland Village, permanently damaging that side of town. It has been suspected and was confirmed yesterday in an email from the superintendent that academic performance was not assessed in any of the schools that they are recommending closure, or any schools in the district as part of this process. HVE is among the best performing schools in the district. The priorities the board is using to recommend school retirement, after talking with a lot of parents, don't align with their electorate's values, in our opinion. They don't account for all four cornerstone of the LASD, student academic, student experience, community, and resource stewardship. Note that the latter also includes community and time, uh, community time and talent, not just financial management. As parents, we know school consolidation may be an eventual reality at best, but we feel the criteria to determine school retirement must be reflected, or must reflect our values and the LASD's own values. Additionally, just to say it outright, Old Highland Village still deserves the elementary school it was designed around, and we should not have to bus our kids to McCallum and Heritage. They're great schools, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't be able to attend the school in our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thinking on that. Do we have anybody else?
Do you have any, oh, do you have any updates from your meetings with the school district?
Um, I, I did, I did meet, I've talked with the school board, some of the school board members. I haven't got a chance to talk to all of them. And I did have a meeting with Dr. Rapp. And it was very eye-opening with the numbers. I think that they had a plan that they shared. I, I think it's a, not a plan, it's a, maybe, I don't even remember what the name of it was. But anyway, and how that if they were to close it, what would happen. I've been assured that the decision has not been made. The reason this resolution is on here tonight is The reason this resolution is on here tonight is because we have, and let me say this first, okay? We have a great relationship with the school district. Absolutely great relationship. They are doing a great job educating our children. The Board of Trustees are doing a fabulous job. None of them want to be put in this, in this situation. Not, not one of them want to have to make this decision. And I want to make that perfectly clear. This is nothing against the school board or the trustees, trustees or the superintendent or the district, but it will impact the city of Highland Village greatly to close any of our schools. I don't want to see any of the Highland Village schools closed. But because we're 6.4 square miles, the impact, we will feel larger than any, the other, because we're so small, and so it's 33%. But to see the numbers, guys, it was eye-opening to see the, and for whatever reason, I, I mean, I gave a perfect example to, I don't remember who I was talking to, it was Dr. Rapp, that my son is 35 years old. He runs, he runs around with eight buddies, friends, still, to this day, that they're still friends. Three of them are married, out of the eight, and one of them just got married last weekend. And out of those eight, one of them has a child. That's it. I don't know what's happening here. What happened to the old, you go, you graduate, you go to college, you get married, you have kids? I don't know. Maybe these young people can explain it to us, but they're not having children, for whatever reason, and it's scary. And, and part of it is affordable housing, we talked about, you know, early, and what, that is so subjective, a realtor, I'm a realtor, and it's so subjective, what is affordable housing? You can't put a dollar amount on affordable housing. But to, to the speaker's point, you know, affordable housing, for me, is in the older part of Highland Village, where that is. So it's, it's just, but my point was, that will be corrected. That will correct itself. Interest rates will go down, people will move, it happens all the time. I'm not moving, and I'm part of the problem. I'm, I don't have children in school, but I'm not moving out of my house, so people can't come in. So I just want to stress, it was a very good meeting, they, they are, they're all wishing that we don't, they're not having to make these decisions. I would wish that the legislators would fund the public school system like they should. That's part of the biggest problem, is they are holding money hostage over this whole voucher talk, and they have not raised the allotment per student in, since 2019. They get $6,160, and it's not even they get that per child, it's based on attendance, and Councilman Hurst, you brought it up in early work session, that whole formula.
Is ridiculous.
Is a mess. You can't, and I guess they do that so nobody understands it.
I've yet to find a legislator who can actually do the math. It's a complete disaster.
So it's, it's just a very, very sad situation that, that they're in. And I would like to stress that part of our, part of this problem is, Highland Village is at buildout. We don't have, we're not building new houses and bringing in, you know, that type of stuff. We, this is kind of a consequence of us being at buildout. We don't have that opportunity. If we were larger, and we were building houses and that kind of stuff, we might not find ourselves in that place. But, you know, we are down to 74 acres, and that's it. So I'm sorry to go on a rant. I asked for this resolution to be put on here because I support LASD, I support Highland Village Elementary. And that's, that's my rant, but I'm sticking to it. But I am going to tell you that we have very good schools in this, in Highland Village. So, but that's, so if anybody else has any questions, comments, I'll let them jump in. We need a, we need a motion and a, oh, okay, now. Mr. Cox?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-3158 urging the Lewisville Independent School District Board of Trustees to consider all available options in lieu of closing Highland Village Elementary.
Okay, and Mr. Fierenzza?
I'll second the motion, but I did want to make a comment that I think it's, the resolution, I think makes a very important point. There's, there's so many considerations that have to be made, not only from the district's point of view, but from ours as well. Most primarily, we want to, we concern ourselves with your, your, your educate, your kids' education and availability in this community, and we support you for that. I think it's premature for the schools to make a decision right now. There's too much going on in the legislature. There's, to me, factors that are going to affect this long-term. So I think it's appropriate that we encourage the Board of Trustees to, to halt this until after legislative session, see if anything changes financially.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, well, with that, we have a motion and a second. So are you?
I'm abstaining.
You're, okay, so, okay, so I just want to make sure that, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, or those abstain? So Councilman Kixmiller is abstaining, and it passes 6-0, 6?
6-0.
6, something.
6-0.
Yeah, 6 passed. All right. Thank you all. Thank you for allowing me to go on a rant. What are you looking at? Okay, so we're going to move on to Consider Resolution 2024-3152, approving a detailed site plan for development of tract 3B Barnett subdivision, commonly known as 105 Barnett Boulevard, presently zoned as single-family residential district SF40, approving special exceptions. Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This item was tabled in the October 22nd meeting with some requests to revised Sheets L1 and L2, and look at the density of the site with the consideration of adding some bushes along the east side of the retention pond. Since that time, the applicant has revised Exhibits L1 and L2. They've removed all the contours that are associated with any proposed, not proposed, sorry, future, and just left the contours for the Phase 1 development. Once Phase 2, Phase 3, whatever that would be, comes forward, would be an opportunity to negotiate at that time. So you have two options in front of you. One is a resolution not adding any of the bushes, and one is a resolution adding the bushes. So the property owner took some pictures, and I'll share them with you here, they're up on the screen of the site. This is the proposed site plan. So his first set of pictures is, he's on the LASD property looking south. Behind the, the car, the pickup truck and the SUV is their property. You can see the density. That's another shot, a little bit to the left of that. There is a house in there on the property, an existing house. You cannot see it due to the density. There's another shot, looking south.
And this is from the school property, Scott?
He is standing on the school property, looking south, so he's taking a series of pictures from, from west to east, and this is the furthest east, looking towards the Briar Hill subdivision. His second set of pictures, he was looking, I think he was at the existing house that's on the site, looking to the residential in Briar Hill. Yeah, that's what he's doing. So in your tree plan, you have to account for anything, any tree that's six inches in diameter at chest-high level. You don't account for anything else. So the dense growth, all the, the density of the smaller trees, five inches and smaller is not accounted for on the tree plan. So this is a picture of the site with, and you can see, it's just, it's dense, you can't You can barely see the rooftop.
Is the property owner going to clean out the, the underbrush and leave the larger trees?
There's no plan of cleaning up the underbrush at this time.
I mean, they don't have to set a plan for, in place for that either, do they?
Say that again.
They don't have to give us a plan for removing the brush.
No.
So the, although I appreciate the comment that it's very dense, it could not be very dense if they go in and clean the underbrush up. They could totally change the look of this. Right?
It's a possibility, yeah. This set of pictures is going to be looking up and down the easement. I'm sorry, that's, that's the existing house looking towards the residential property, Briar Hill.
The far back would be Briar Hill, right? Property on the left.
Right, and it's going to be the furthest part of the?
Photographer is taking the picture due east, essentially.
Say that again.
The, the picture is taken from the standpoint of looking due east towards Briar Hill.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes, Rhonda?
Go back to the tree survey. So really, there's nothing that's required, every, anything that is regulatory, six inches or more, is going to be removed where the detention pond is.
Correct.
So even if they kept the underbrush, but regulatory, they could clear it all out, and there's, there'd be no screening, natural screening, as what's there today, correct? There's no tree staying, there's, they could clear cut all of that and clear it all out, and they would, we, there'd be no natural, they don't have to leave it, I guess, is my question.
Well, that's, that's your negotiating decision right now. Yes, they have to leave it per this site plan that you're considering of approval. If they Xed out every tree, then yeah, they can remove.
I guess my question is, there's a lot of growth there, but that's not covered in our tree ordinance, is what I'm saying. There was a lot of pictures that showed a lot of density, but if you look at that plan, from the blue dot, the bottom right-hand corner, there's really nothing they have to keep.
Right.
Okay, that's all. You did that clarification.
This is the fences on the residential side, looking north or south, I really can't tell with the density. He is in the easement, the 30-foot easement, on the backside of the residential properties. One's north, one's south. I would assume that's north. That's looking south.
So 35 feet from approximately the fence line back is the drainage easement, correct?
Yeah. 30-foot easement, has a water line, a sewer line, and a storm, I think it's 30.
This is saying 35, that's why you use 35.
Could be 35.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it houses all three pieces of buried infrastructure.
Okay.
Is the detention pond sized for the whole future 2 and 3, or will it have to be expanded?
It is sized for the complete development, Phase 1, 2, and 3.
I might make a comment. I walked the property since the last meeting, every foot of the property on the inside, which is very thick. But then I went on the backside, all of the homes that are budding the property on the rear are at a lower elevation than what this property is. Okay, so the first home, which is closest to the memory center, actually has about a three-foot berm on their backyard going up. Then they have an eight-foot fence on top of that berm. So they're roughly 11 feet to try to see over into the property, just because they're set lower. And all of those going to the north are similar, but the fences are six feet at that point. So when you're on the temple property, you're seeing the drip line of the roof of the houses behind it, but that's it. So it's, it's a natural, plus there's a dead-end street.
Right.
Filling up part of that, very.
Does that, does the end of that street, does it have a fence running along it as well?
No, it's just natural overgrowth. I mean, if the city wanted to clear, is that city property?
It is public right of way.
Yeah, and we haven't cleared it for a few years.
I do have a complaint every now and then of, of the existing drainage inlet.
Yeah. But I wanted to look at it, and there were some big trees that if you're, you know, the area that might have the fire lane in the future, there's a huge pine tree that would be retained right in that back corner.
Well, Scott, is it a requirement of the homeowners to have a fence on their back property? Can they take that down anytime they want?
Only if they have pools.
Okay. So there's nothing stopping the home from taking the fence down, and then there's absolutely nothing to screen them from a non-residential use behind them, correct? Say they want to enjoy the gardens, so they take their fence down, and, you know, there's nothing stopping it.
That's their prerogative.
Yeah, okay.
However, it is property on the other side of that fence.
Understood, but without a screening wall, which is what we're considering here, I mean, that would technically stop it. But, I mean, I'm willing to concede that the property is treated up and it's dense, but there is no protections for anything under six inches, right? Anything we approve here, Kevin, I guess this is for you, is how long does it, is it good for? Is it, is it survive ownership changes? Does it survive? You know, if we're going to, if we're going to waive the screening wall along the back property for this use, and this, if the temple, for whatever reason, sells itself to a different buyer, does that lack of requirement for a screening wall carry to the next person? And are we then creating a problem for us later where we have a, a, a non-residential, but not a, you know, perhaps a commercial use that moves in there, that's no longer required to have that screened? Does that make sense? Sorry.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. The, the way, again, Section 2 of the, of the resolution only, is only going to be applicable to this first phase. So at future phases, we'll have an opportunity to revisit the screening and maybe require it at a different, at a later phase if it turns out we, we need, we need it because of the revisions to the site plan. You know, anytime, you know, at any point, you just come in and amend that site plan for some other, you know, for some other purpose, and start moving buildings. And let's, let's say for some reason, the temple, and I don't know that that would ever happen, or sort of not in our lifetimes, but, you know, if the temple property were to sell, and they were changing to different use, they wanted to demolish the, the Phase 1 building, and come in, put in something different, rearrange the property, this wouldn't apply, because it's only applying to this configuration of this site plan, and the way we've written it, this phase. Once they start bringing in new buildings, we've got an opportunity to revisit the screening because we're only, again, in part because of the location of the first buildings being so far to the west, that it, you know, once you start getting more buildings, getting closer to the, moving, start moving east, it starts changing the dynamics of, of the need for the screening to the. screening to the, you know, along the property line.
Okay. So, I mean, from my opinion, it's only my opinion, obviously, I don't have an issue if they have to revisit everything we're considering here today on a Phase 2. If it's all free game at that point, then it seems reasonable to me to, I mean, I'd like the screening to be there, but I'm not going to.
But isn't that part of Option 2, having the screening?
Correct, I mean, there's two options, right? So what I'm saying.
Because the last time we were talking, I thought the issue was that there was no screening, so now they've come back with an option with screening.
Well, it's screening with plants.
Right.
With hedges, you know, because the current requirement would be to put up a mainstream wall.
Right. Totally agree, but yeah, we had discussed a natural screening.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. But my concern of the natural screening was when I was looking at the grading plan, and I know that's been fixed, but previously it was wiping out a whole lot more than what they were showing, and that's where the concern was, is that there was no screening. But if for them to do that in the future, they have to come back before the council, then that 41 Burford Holly's is just going to be more of a maintenance nightmare than it is, you know, an effective screen that they don't already have now. Now, in Phase 2, they may not have it, and it may be worthwhile, so, you know, I'd like to still see it be installed, but I'm not going to, you know, hold anything up here. So, one other question, who owns the detention pond? Who maintains it?
It's a drainage easement privately maintained.
Privately maintained for how long? Forever?
Forever.
Okay. And is it required to be fenced around or anything like that?
No, it's not, it's not a wit. It's not deep.
Where does that outflow? Because I mean, it's a huge ditch between the memory center and the temple property, and it disappears into the brush, but I mean, it's a huge.
Unfortunately, this property does not drain to that existing regional detention. It drains to the dead-end street, public right-of-way.
Okay. And then does it go underground?
Which has an inlet, existing inlet there.
Okay.
So it's going to drain to that.
I was going to climb in there, but it was too thick.
Don't do that.
Okay.
Are the only differences between the two options, the fact that one has the natural screening and the other one doesn't, and they both have removed the grading? Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? For future phases, what is our mitigation regulations for trees? When you, is it per caliper inch? Can you, what is our tree mitigation requirements?
We don't have a tree mitigation, we have a tree removal ordinance.
So they can remove all the trees, there's nothing to plant back?
No, we made a run at that previously several years ago and ended up not approving it.
Okay.
For whatever reason, or I can't remember exactly why, but, and that's been quite a few years ago, but we did make a run at revising those regulations to create more of a tree mitigation fee, you know, having a tree fund, you know, a tree replacement fund in lieu of planting type like other cities have, and ended up, council at the time ended up not adopting it.
Regarding the detention bond, privately owned, they have to maintain it. What standards or guidelines can we hold them to, to maintain it?
You have this site plan in our, in the civil plans.
Will they submit an O and M?
As long as, as well as our drainage ordinance and erosion.
If we get complaints from the homeowners behind them, we can go in and force them to dredge or do whatever.
As part of the drainage ordinance, MS4 permits.
So we have control if there's an issue? That's my concern.
Right. An example would be years ago, at the end of Highland Village Road here, where the painted tree is now, the primrose, that was overgrown, it was privately owned. However, the company went defunct. The city went in and told everybody that was in the regional drainage area, it's time to clean it up, and it's cleaned up, and you've seen the results since it's been 10-plus years ago.
That was not an expensive city.
We actually had to deal with Kroger on that one. Yeah, Kroger was part of that deal.
That was not a cost the city had to incur, that was taken care of by the.
By the time.
Okay.
Some staff time.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Because there are two ordinances, how do we handle this?
I'm sorry?
It's a resolution.
Two options.
There's two options at the resolution, so how do we choose which option?
Yeah, we labeled them Option 1 and Option 2.
Move for Option, the Option 1 resolution, which does not.
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. I believe it's a copy and paste, the Option 2.
Yeah, Option 1 does not have the holly bushes.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Feaster, sure?
Yeah, no. Yeah, no. Trying to find my words, I apologize. I was just going to make a motion since I caused all the trouble to begin with, that spirit of comedy. I'm just trying to find that number. I'd like to make the motion, we approve Option 1 of Resolution 2024-3152.
Okay. Counsel, we have a motion, and Mr. Kixmiller, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oh, wait, timeout.
I do, sorry, I do have one last clarification, just I want to hear it one more time. So any Phase 2 plans that come back to this property, anything that we're approving right now is not going to get grandfathered in in any Phase 2 approvals.
Anything they add, and I think, again, let me see if I can find the language in the resolution. Yeah. The special, yeah, it's in Section 2C. "A special exception set forth in this section 2 shall apply only to the development of the property in accordance with the detailed site plan approved by this resolution. Such special exception may be modified or repealed at the time of any future amendments to such detailed site plan. If additional development of the property will require the removal of additional trees to provide screening between the buildings located at the property and property located east of the property." Now, if we want to, we can take that last phrase off. Just simply say, "Such special exception may be modified or repealed at any time any future amendments to such detailed plan, such detailed site plan, if additional, well, at the time of any future developments to this detailed site plan." So we can modify it to, and take off, so that would apply to any changes to the site plan, not just the removal of additional trees.
Well, I mean, I don't think that motion, I mean, I don't think that modification needs to be done because the trees are the crux of the issue here. I mean, mowing down all the trees would cause a bigger issue, and if they have to come back for approval for the tree removal, then I think that's the trigger that we would want to use for reconsidering.
And if you saw what they were planning for Phase 2, Phase 2 would necessarily require the removal of additional trees that currently aren't being removed, so I think.
But I don't want to bring them back just because they want to move the dumpster a little bit or something like that, right? So.
Perfect. Okay, Mr. Fox?
So with the Option 1, why wouldn't we just approve Option 2 to create that living barrier back there? Because all they're proposing, that's the only difference between Option 1 and Option 2, and we get a live barrier of holly trees that will eventually grow somewhere between six and eight feet. And even if it's not for the residents living there, if there is a clearing of that deep brush across that easement, then it still provides somewhat of a better-looking live barrier on the backside of the property, from what they have proposed.
My take on that, it's 30 feet in from the fences, and the fences are there. So if people take their fence down, then that could be an issue, but if they don't take their fence down, it's invisible. Plus, to plant along that line, I mean, it's just more maintenance on them, so.
Or there could also be additional modifications coming in Phase 2 that we don't know about yet that might require a different type of screening wall.
Yeah.
And Phase 2 may never happen, and, you know, hope it does, but it may never happen, so now you just got a hedge back there.
Yeah.
Like I said, to me, the fact that we're requiring any modifications to come back before the board, I think for me is good enough that, you know, we have a sufficient control for future development, and I think the way the present property sits and looks, that hedge is going to be redundant. So that's just my thought. So at this point, we're just kind of wasting the owner's money for no benefit, so.
So we have a motion and a second, not requiring.
For Option 1.
Yeah, we're for Option 1, okay. If there's no further discussion, counsel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so it's 6-1. All right. We are going to move on to. Conduct a public hearing and consider Ordinance 2024-1318, amending Chapter 22 Utilities, Article 22.06 Drainage Utilities, Section 2206-003, monthly charges established of the city code of ordinances by amending the charges to be levied for drainage services. And this will be the first of two reads.
Mayor.
Yes?
Mayor, counsel, if you, as you may recall, in our budget discussions this summer, we talked about the need to adjust our drainage fee as we would be exhausting all our reserves this year. The way this is set up, basically, we have a static fee that's for revenue source, where basically we assess a fee per 1,000 feet of impervious cover at each property in the city, and that just essentially becomes a fixed fee for the duration of that particular fee. So we do that, on the other side, our expenditures are not fixed, and they tend to increase over time, which they surely have. So initially, in 2007, when we set this drainage utility up, it was a fee of $1.20 per 1,000 square feet of impervious, and we established a crew of four initially that did drainage work around the city. We've saved millions of dollars over the years by not having to outsource this, so it's been tremendously profitable for the city. So eventually, we had to adjust our fee, which we did in 2014, adjusting it to $1.40, so we increased it by 20 cents. So currently, we have a budget of about half a million dollars a year with our current fee, and then it's gradually increased, and so we're looking ahead, we covered a good bit of years with that, we're looking ahead at least five years, and we determined that we would need a 40-cent increase to raise about another $150,000 a year. That would take us at least, we anticipate, five years, hopefully a little bit more. So that's kind of what's on the table for tonight, and with this, we would have a public hearing because it's a utility increase, and then we can discuss bringing the ordinance.
All right, we will open the public hearing. Anybody would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. No pushing, no shoving. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Oh, I opened it, what time was it, 8:22, and closed it at 8:22.
Okay. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Kixmiller, are you wanting to ask a question?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, go, go for it. I see you trying to find your light, so.
Yeah, no, it's.
Okay.
This would result in about $1.70 increase a month for the average resident.
Before you make your motion, I do have one question, if you don't mind. Would you, for the benefit of everyone, explain what the drainage fee is utilized for?
I'll give, just in general, if more detail, Scott can certainly address that, but, you know, around the city, one of our biggest problems always is drainage issues, and the utility was set up to basically handle the smaller ones, though certainly where we, you know, we have to, we have regulations with treatment of stormwater and to get, basically keep it off our properties and flow where it needs to go. We also established mosquito abatement program some years back, and that's been very involved, especially with the various diseases that become prevalent with that, and that's been very successful as well. So those are the two primary things we accomplished with the drainage. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Kixmiller?
I'd like, I'd make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2024-1318, amending Chapter 22 of the Utilities Article 22.06 Drainage Utility as read.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion. I have a second. Okay, Mr. Nelson, second. Any further discussion? Questions? I'm sorry, Sean. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, carries 7-0. Moving on, consider Resolution 2024-3154 authorizing negotiation and execution of a contract for construction services with G and C Electric for the Doubletree Ranch Park Electrical Upgrade Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the local government purchasing cooperative buy board.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. During this fiscal year's budget process, staff identified the need to add electrical connections in the parking lots in front of the barn. The electrical connections would accommodate food trucks, bounce houses, and decorations for special events and facility rentals. These improvements will enhance the experience for those who attend events such as city concert series, Wind Down with the Grinch, and Christmas at the ranch, and for those groups that would like to have food trucks during their rentals at the barn and the pavilion. So the options and results, enhance user experience for those attending events at Doubletree Ranch Park, eliminate the cost of renting generators for special events at Doubletree Ranch Park, as well as reduce noise pollution from generator motors, increase opportunities, for example, a taste of Highland Village, a pop-up farmer's market, food truck events, and possibly even a car show are some examples of some events that could utilize these electrical connections. And the progress to date, an official quote has been submitted for the necessary electrical upgrades at Doubletree Ranch Park, and city administration has determined in accordance with state law that the construction services comply with the city's specifications and may be acquired from C and G Electric through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with local government purchasing cooperative buy board. So the budgetary impacts are Doubletree Ranch Park, the project's total cost is $99,964. We had a budget of about $114. And the funding was approved by the Highland Village City, or by the city council as a supplemental request for fiscal year '25 budget. So the recommendation is to approve Resolutions 20, or Resolution 2024-3154 authorizing a negotiation and execution of a contract for construction services with C and G Electrical for the Doubletree Ranch Park Electrical Upgrade Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with local government purchasing cooperative buy board as presented. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yes.
Quick question, do you know how much we spend on generators at Doubletree Ranch Park on an annual basis? I'm just curious, I mean, I don't like.
You know, before I went to my daughter's wedding, I actually had my staff give me that number, and I apologize that I don't have it, but it was in the thousands, and I can certainly share that with counsel tomorrow via an email.
How many food truck connections will this accommodate?
Well, I apologize, I don't have that number with me. I had it during the budget process.
And this is also.
It's an excess of six.
It's moving the food trucks up in the upper circle, correct?
Yes.
It's more than six?
Yeah, oh, yes. Yes, it is. And it's also, you know, providing electrical for the center island there, which we're going to put a Christmas tree there and other features.
Yeah, okay.
Construction starts?
As soon as we can get an agreement signed.
Do they have electrical there on the walkway where the food trucks are now, where they park them? Is there electrical there, or do they use generators there? You know where I'm talking about, where they park food trucks now for the concerts?
Yes, there is electrical.
Okay.
Put that in a couple years ago.
Yeah, okay. And then, but we're adding in front of the barn.
This is Phase 2. It was actually in, you know, we had both designed at the time that we added the electrical along the trail in front of the pavilion. So this is the second phase of that, to complete it.
Okay, counsel, does anybody else have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-3154 authorizing negotiation and execution of a contract for construction services with G and C Electric for the Doubletree Ranch Park Electrical Upgrade Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the local government purchasing cooperative buy board.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Who's second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Pia Renza, second. No further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 20. Consider Resolution 2024-3155, awarding grant funds to community nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2024-2025. Ms. Miller?
Mayor and counsel, earlier, during early work session, counsel did have an opportunity to discuss the nonprofit organizations seeking funding from counsel out of this year's budget. We did have the, all of the applications have been priorly submitted to counsel for review. We also had the nonprofit organizations come in last month to do presentations on the services, services that they provided to Highland Village residents. So this is an opportunity, should counsel choose to do funding allocations, you may do so with formal action.
Perfect. May I have any questions? I know we had a discussion, and I don't know who has, do we need to read them off? Rhonda, you want to do that?
Oh, I guess I will.
Ah, thank you.
Math nerd to the rescue.
The math nerd to the rescue. There you go.
Hold on, I gotta put my old lady glasses on.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right. Well, then, I guess, Rhonda, you want to make a motion?
I do have one comment, though. I would, I would like to extend appreciation to all the nonprofits that did come and request funds and explain their services. And I really appreciate the service they provide to our citizens.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else? Rhonda?
All right. We're gonna start with Christian Community Action, $3,739.82. Denton County Friends of the Family, $3,739.82.
Can I, hang, I'm sorry. Does she need to make a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-3155 with the following allocations.
Oh, okay.
You're good.
Hold on. I motion to approve, what is it called? Resolution 2024-3155, awarding grant funds to the community nonprofit organization for fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
As follows.
As follows.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Now I can start the spreadsheet reading. Sorry.
No, you're good.
It's new. Christian Community Action, $3,739.82. Denton County Friends of the Family, $3,739.82. Denton County MHMR Center, $3,739.82. Heart of the City, $3,739.82. Love Packs, $1,680. Love Thy Neighbor, $3,000. Salvation Army Louisville, $3,739.82. Span Inc., Mills on Wheels of Denton, $1,932. Special Abilities of North Texas, $3,739.82. CASA of Denton County, $3,000. Communities and Schools of North Texas, $3,500. Journey to Dream, $3,739.82. PD Place, $3,739.82. Louisville Education Foundation, LEF, $3,739.82. Chisholm Trail Retired Senior Volunteer, $2,500. Friends of Flower Mound Public Library, $500. Louisville Lake Symphony Association, $3,739.82. Louisville Playhouse, $1,250. Studio B Performing Arts, $3,739.82. And to round it off, MLK of North Texas, $1,000.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Okay. Counsel, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Do we have a motion? Any further, in a second, do we have any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's 7-0. Thank you. So stick around because you get the next one, too.
I know.
Consider Resolution 2024-3156, casting votes for one or more candidates for appointments to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Ms. Miller?
So in September of 2024, council nominated Alex Buck as a candidate for appointment to the Denton County, or the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. The city has since received notification from the chief appraiser of DCAD of the list of candidates, along with a number of votes based on tax levies that the city is entitled to cast for board members. So each taxing jurisdiction may cast votes for one candidate or may distribute their votes among any number of the candidates. This year, the city of Highland Village has 28 votes to cast. Information on the candidates, some of them provided bios and information that they had provided to DCAD, that information has been provided to you all. So this is your opportunity, if you would like to, on how you would like to cast your vote.
Thank you. Counsel, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Miller? Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion.
You may.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
That we approve, couldn't, let's see, what am I doing here? Where am I? Approved Resolution 2024-3156, casting all 28 votes for Alex Buck.
I second.
Oh, and Mr. Kicks Miller, second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Counsel? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 22. Consider Resolution 2024-3157, approving the city's legislative program for the 89th Texas Legislature.
Mayor and counsel, the Texas Legislature will convene in January of 2025. And prior to every legislative session, we do adopt a legislative agenda. And what we went over in the workshop was our legislative priorities. And I'll just briefly touch base on those. First one was to oppose the prohibition of minimum lot sizes in single-family zoned areas. Also oppose the right to build accessory dwelling units with no restrictions. With regard to finance, we do desire to maintain our certificates of obligation and using that as a viable financing mechanism, as such as not to shifting non-voter approved debt to be paid through maintenance and operations portion of the city tax rate. And we also opposing a legislation that would increase or expand the current appraisal caps. We've also asked that the legislatures would increase the basic alama per student funding amount to keep up with inflation. And then with regard to community censorship, to maintain the right for cities to be able to use firms such as TML and others to help us stay informed on critical legislative issues. And to also be able to maintain the right to have elections in May as opposed to being on November ballots with federal and state elections. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on any of those.
I do have a question. These issues that we've, that we're concerned with, how are they communicated to the legislators? Do we have an opportunity to, do we submit them back to TML? Do we have an opportunity to do face-to-face meetings with our representatives and we can encourage them and give them our real heartfelt concerns?
Great question. What we've always done in the past is meet with our legislative team. In general, they're very open to allowing us to do that. Also, if there's any time to go down to Austin, such as Denton County Days, or if it gets to a critical point that we might need to go before a committee, we can do that. So we do stay very active and stay in touch with our legislative members to make sure that they are hearing our voice and make sure that they're also following and tracking the progress of those bills for us.
Are we going to coordinate with other communities in Denton County, for Denton County Days, to make this a top priority?
Yes, we certainly will. Again, with, with so many of these items being a very high priority of cities in Denton County, we will certainly make a concerted effort to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I think the Denton County Days, you know, the chambers are the ones that, that do that. And I have that date and I can't, I look at it and see, but it's...
The chambers are heavily involved in that particular event as well.
Yes. Yeah, they're the ones that arrange that. And so we all go down and, and we hit each one of the legislatures. And in the past, we have gone to every, all of them, not just taken ones that represent us, but we've gone to all and given the information that...
And that actually brings up another question. Prior to Denton County Days, assuming that any or all of us participate in the event, will there be a formal meeting, posted meeting, that we can gather and we can coordinate our efforts so that we can push these as well when we're down there?
You know, I think that would be a good idea because so often, when you do get to Denton County Days, it is very rapid. You have just a little bit of time. There is reception where our legislative members are there. But I think with some of these being so critical, it might be best to schedule some appointments to have those discussions.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Rhonda?
Can you keep us in the loop when they, when they're getting on the committee with the calendar committee and, and all that? Because I'm sure it won't coincide with those, because we do Flood Plane Manager Day, I do Civil Engineering Day, and it's so busy and it's more of a rah-rah session. But where the rubber meets the road is the committee. And, and so having the best headups of when they get into that committee, or at least let us know the bills that have been filed, because they're easy to track. And we, as council members, can track them and see when we can go down there to lobby for ourselves.
Yeah, we'll certainly do that. I would recommend, as a session starts, TML does put out an email every Friday with an update. And then if you go to Texas Legislature online, you can also track the bills that way as well. But we'll certainly make sure that we keep you all informed as those bills progress.
Well, and if you're tracking as well, if you could let, you know, city know, and then they can share it with us that, you know...
And you can get on the alerts. And what they do allow now, too, just to let anybody out in the audience know, that it's just not the council members that can, can say something. The city can, the citizens can. And you are allowed to provide testimony online and written format prior to the start of the meeting. I do it all the time for important things. So I think we can let our fellow, I'll let you know, so you can let them know. But our, our citizens know because it does have an effect. So it's not just us that can go down there and do it. All of our citizens can. And then they, we have this, let's see if I have it. So I don't have it. Oh, I do. And on top of it, they're gonna make these fancy things. So if you're going down, or you're with people, or you, you want to bring a council member, we actually have talking points that we'll have provided. So you guys aren't going empty-handed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, I think I need a motion. I don't think I got a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Wait, I gotta read, get back up to the motion. Consider Resolution 2024-3157, approving the city's legislative program for the 89th Texas Legislative Session.
You're moving to approve that?
I am moving to approve that.
Thank you. I need a second, counsel?
I'll second.
Thank you. Brian? So we have a motion and a second, counsel. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's 7-0. All right. Moving right into late work session. I don't think we have anything to carry over.
Rentals?
No.
No, we said no.
No.
Okay, thank you. Robert?
I even say no.
Okay. Number 23. Status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Counsel, does anyone have anything?
I do have one request, please. If we can get an update on an earlier request made regarding the landscape plans and certain developments, and get an update on their progress, please.
Be glad to do that tomorrow. In fact, I meant to get that out this afternoon. I got stuck in a meeting. So I'll certainly give you an update.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yes. That's, yes, definitely.
Yeah.
That's a good one. Anybody else? Okay. Well, if not, then we are adjourned at 8:42.